I'm glad you're putting them into its good use.
Janice?
Yes.
Do you have a pen?
I do not.
That's okay.
We have so many pens.
You want my pen?
Yeah. That's it.
I have some. I made myself an empty. Fill the things and I got my stuff.
Really? That's a good one.
Let me speak to that one, man.
Exactly.
Just.
Okay, so I feel like maybe.
I believe so, yes.
Okay, well, we've just had three executive sessions and a study session, so we're ready to start our regular meeting. This is the TIP City Council Monday, December 2nd, 2024 meeting. We've already had roll calls, so we'll start with the prayer for guidance, which Leah Morando from Upper Room Worship Center is here. Thank you for being here.
Hi, ma'am. Thank you for having me. And I am, Leah could not make it tonight, so I'm Emily, and I'm honored to be here, so thank you.
Oh, great. Well, thank you, Emily. We'll start with the prayer for guidance and then go right into the pledge.
Yes, ma'am. Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for the freedom to come together in this great nation, in this great city. Lord, we thank you for the responsibility as a people and for the leaders right here that we have to steward what you have given us, which is, again, it's freedom and it's love and it's prosperity, and it's just what this amazing town is. And so, Lord, we're praying for guidance tonight. You know the plans that you have for us, and the plans are good. Plans are good for the people in this room, for this council, for this city. And so, Lord, I pray that you give us ears to hear what you're speaking, is that we might make decisions that lead us into the path that you have for TIP City, Lord. And, Lord, I pray for our government workers. I pray for our first responders. I pray for protection for them. But I thank you for the people who are giving their life to service to this great city. Lord, I pray for this agenda. I pray that everything that needs to be hashed out, that we talk things that need to be talked about, that we make the decisions that need to be made, that we don't move faster than you, but we don't move slower than you either. Lord, again, thank you for this time together, and it's in Jesus's name that I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you again, Emily.
Thank you.
Next, we have the agenda, which for any guests, we have an area for you to sign in, a sheet there by the door, as well as copies of the agenda. All council members should have had the opportunity to review tonight's agenda. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
A second?
Second.
And we did have a change to the agenda for tonight to add an executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters, so I'd like to make a motion to modify the agenda, to add that executive session.
Second.
Could I have a second? Thank you. So could we have a vote on the motion to amend tonight's agenda to add the additional executive session?
President Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Liddy?
Yes.
Mrs. Pittenger?
Yes.
Mr. Slagel?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. Insland?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you. So the agenda as amended is before us. Are there any comments or questions about that agenda? Any revisions? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you call the role to approve the amended agenda?
President Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Liddy?
Yes.
Mrs. Pittenger?
Yes.
Mr. Slagel?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. Insland?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have the minutes of the November 18th, 2024 City Council Work Session. Could I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any changes or comments on those minutes? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you call the role to approve the minutes of the November 18th City Council Work Session?
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. Slagel?
Yes.
Mr. Liddy?
Yes.
Mr. Insland?
Yes.
Mrs. Pittenger?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
President Huffman?
Yes. Next, we have the minutes of the November 18th, 2024 City Council Meeting. Could I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any changes or comments on those minutes? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you call the role to approve the minutes of the November 18th, 2024 City Council Meeting?
Mrs. Pittenger?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
President Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Slagel?
Yes.
Mr. Liddy?
Yes.
Mr. Insland?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have under Presentations, Proclamations, and Awards, a Giving Tuesday proclamation. I believe this is being presented by Mayor Rogers.
Hang on a minute. We're all up line. NPR voice. Whereas Giving Tuesday was established as a national day of giving on the Tuesday following Thanksgiving. And whereas Giving Tuesday is a celebration of philanthropy and volunteerism, where people give whatever they are able to give. And whereas Giving Tuesday is a day where citizens work together and share commitments, rally for favored causes, build a stronger community, and think of other people. And whereas the spinning and propping of Giving Tuesday, and on every day, recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service in the city of TIP City. And whereas Giving Tuesday is an opportunity to encourage citizens to serve others throughout this holiday season and during other time of year. And now therefore, I love and admire the virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of TIP City, Ohio, who hereby proclaim Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024, as Giving Tuesday in the city of TIP City, Ohio. And encourage all citizens to join together to give back to the community in any way that is personally meaningful. And when it is there, I will have to set my hand, pause, and seal the city of TIP City, Ohio, to be fixed this Saturday, December 2024.
Thank you, Mayor Rogers. Next, on the agenda, we have ordinances for second reading. We have an ordinance amending 2024 appropriations and modifying the annual operating budget as a result of this action. This was introduced by Mrs. Pittenger. Mr. Mack?
Yes. This ordinance amends and modifies this year's operating budget to appropriate additional funds for unanticipated events that have occurred. These expenses include tax refund, income tax refunds, vehicle and facility maintenance for police and fire, EMS billing, and engineering services.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Mrs. Pittenger, do you still wish to sponsor this?
Yes.
Ordinance. Thank you. Are there any council comments related to the ordinance? Hearing none. The public hearing is now open. Would anyone from the public like to speak to this ordinance? If so, please come forward. Seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Clerk, could you call the role to approve the ordinance?
Mrs. Pittenger?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Slagel?
Yes.
Mr. Liddy?
Yes.
Mr. Insland?
Yes.
President Huffman?
Yes.
Ordinance 3624.
Next, under Resolutions, we have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Woodard Development for the assumption of the purchase contract and escrow agreement for parcels G15-019537 and G15-019539, commonly known as the Plaza Properties. Mr. Mack?
Yes, this resolution authorizes the city manager to enter into an agreement with Woodard Development for the purchase of the Plaza property, both parcels, as you mentioned.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Would a council member like to sponsor this resolution?
I'll sponsor. Move for adoption.
A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Liddy. Are there any council comments related to the resolution?
Just want to say a lot of hard work has gone into this to get us to this point, and proud of the city and city council making a substantial step forward in the improvements in our community.
Here, here.
I would agree with that. I'd also say part of that hard work has been a plan that's been developed by council members, the staff here, as well as the CIC, and I think that it's been important to know that this is a significant investment by the community into a property that I think we recognize needs improvement, and this was the avenue that has been recommended by the professional partner that we've had in Woodard Development. So I feel comfortable moving forward, even though it's a significant investment, knowing that there is a plan for the city to be repaid for the investment, and hopefully the community gets behind this. We should have more information out soon, too, on the use of the property and what that development is going to look like. So I'm hoping that, you know, this, Mr. Mack, is able to communicate, you know, that to the community effectively, so that everyone understands what is going to go into that property. And also, just timeline, I think maybe some explanation of that might be useful now, because that's not really been laid out to this point.
Yeah. Once this resolution is passed, the city will enter an agreement for the purchase. Once we close on the property and acquire it, there will be a period of hold where the city, there's existing leases of the properties on the site, so the city will be working behind the scenes on the plan. We also initially plan to invest in landscape and making some aesthetic improvements to the site right away, but there will be a hold period while we, again, work on the plan and the existing leases that are currently under contract expire.
Okay. And do you know when you expect to have more information? Exactly what is, like, what is, is there a plan to roll out, that plan to the community?
We're current, we're working on that. I don't have a timeline exactly on what that, when that plan will be released or what that looks like exactly, but as we get that information, we will share it with the public via social media, press release, and of course, here at council as well.
I know one of my concerns was investing city tax dollars into property like this. Are there other areas that are doing this, that we're modeling this after? Are good examples in our area?
There are. There are a lot of communities currently working on the same process, essentially working with the development partner, often that same development partner, we are doing a TIF on the property and, you know, recovering the city's investment through that TIF on the property. And a few, just worth noting in the area, say, Middletown, West Carrollton, and Sidney are three, just, you know, that are currently in development as we speak today.
Are there any other council comments related to the resolution? Hearing none. The public hearing is now open. If anyone from the public would like to step forward and speak to this resolution, please do so. Seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Clerk, could you call the role to approve this resolution?
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. Liddy?
Yes.
Mrs. Pittenger?
Yes.
Mr. Slagel?
Yes.
President Huffman?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Insland?
Yes.
Resolution 4624.
Thank you. Next, we have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Sent Real Estate Advisors for the property maintenance and listing agent services for parcels G15-019537 and G15-019539, commonly known as the Plaza Property. Mr. Mack?
Yeah, this resolution authorizes the city manager to enter into a management agreement with the Sent Real Estate Advisors. They will act as the agent for the city regarding maintenance on this Plaza property, again, during this hold period while the city owns it and still has tenants leasing space there.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Would a council member like to sponsor this resolution?
I will.
A second?
Second.
Are there any council comments related to the resolution? Hearing none. The public hearing is now open. If anyone from the public would like to step forward and speak to this resolution? Seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Clerk, could you call the role to approve this resolution?
Mrs. Pittenger?
Yes.
Mr. Insland?
Yes.
Mr. Slagel?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
President Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Liddy?
Yes.
Resolution 4724.
Next, we have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a consulting agreement with Woodard Development for the purposes of negotiating an assignable purchase agreement for plus or minus 60 acres of vacant land intended for future commercial, retail, and residential development. Mr. Mack?
Yes, similar to the Plaza project, this agreement would, we would enter into a contract with Woodard Development for consulting services regarding due diligence, negotiation of purchase price, and payment of earnest money for 60 acres of land. This property is being evaluated for its potential for future commercial, retail, and residential development.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Would a council member like to sponsor this resolution?
I'll sponsor.
A second?
Second.
Any council comments related to the resolution? Because the only thing I have is just the more information we'll be coming on this to the community. Is that right?
That's correct. And again, similar to, you know, the Plaza project, as we have all the information, we'll do a press release for the public and share that publicly.
Thank you. Any other council comments, questions? Hearing none. The public hearing is now open. If anyone from the public would like to speak to this resolution, please come forward. Seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Clerk, please call the role to approve the resolution.
Mr. Liddy?
Yes.
Mr. Insland?
Yes.
Mrs. Pittenger?
Yes.
Mr. Slagel?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
President Huffman?
Yes.
Resolution 4824.
Next, we have a resolution authorizing the city manager of the city of TIP City to enter into an agreement with TIP Monroe Community Services for the provision of various recreational programs for the year 2025 at a cost not to exceed $17,700. Mr. Mack?
Yeah, this is just our annual contract, Community Services, for all the recreational programming that they provide for the city. Again, it's $17,700 for this annual contract.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Would a council member like to sponsor this resolution?
I'll sponsor. Move for adoption.
A second?
Second.
Sorry.
Either one.
Are there any council comments related to the resolution?
Well, I think it's a worthwhile project donation that we're doing. I would like to have seen it increase, because it's been at this level for quite a while, but, because they do do an awful lot for the community as a whole. So I'm glad we're doing it again this year. I hope we're doing it again this year. Still gotta get the vote, don't we?
That's true. What other contributions do we make to community services?
In regards to?
Like supporting, I know we have, they use the building, the city-owned building. Do we have any value on that, or idea of how they're supported?
I can't provide a value, but we do provide, you know, the maintenance and things on that building, and I believe utilities as well. I don't believe they pay utilities on that, on that building, and then this contract.
The 17,700?
Yes.
One thing I've said in the past is I'd like to see us formalize that agreement with them for the use of the building, and, you know, things in terms of insurance liability, you know, all of that being either at least agreement or at least part of, you know, showing the support and putting the dollar value on that if possible.
And we do have that planned for a future study session to discuss further, so that's on our radar.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other council comments related to this resolution?
Just to echo what Mr. Kessler said, and, you know, this is a great value that we get for the cost, and as a parent in the community who regularly uses these programs, I can say that they do an outstanding job putting everything together. And we should all be thankful that we have such strong leadership in that role and such a great organization putting together our recreational material for the community.
I agree. Okay, public hearing is now open. If anyone from the public would like to speak to the resolution, please come forward. Seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Clerk, could you take the vote on passage of this resolution?
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. Slagel?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
President Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Insland?
Yes.
Mr. Liddy?
Yes.
Mrs. Pittenger?
Outstanding.
Next, we have a resolution approving the.
Resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
4924.
So moving on, we have a resolution approving the city's financial participation in the Miami County Hazardous Materials Hazmat Program under the auspices of the Miami County Emergency Management Agency, EMA, and authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Miami County Commission and the cities of Pickwa and Troy governing such participation. Mr. Mack?
Yeah, this is an annual contract, a four-way agreement we have with Pickwa, the city of Troy, TIP City, and Miami County to share the cost of the Miami County Hazmat Team. TIP City is responsible for 13% of the total annual cost at $3,250. And also, this is a two-year agreement.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mack. Would someone like to sponsor the resolution?
I will.
A second?
Second.
Any council comments or questions on the resolution? I just, is the 3250, is that two-year or one-year?
That is an annual cost, yes, so we will pay that same cost next year.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. The public hearing is now open. Would anyone from the public like to speak to the resolution? Please come forward.
Wait, we gonna do motions? Oh, never mind. I'm reading something else.
Yeah. This is, we'll just finish, so if no one, I don't see anyone coming up to speak, so we'll close the public hearing and take a vote on the resolution. Madam Clerk, please call the role.
Mrs. Pittenger?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
President Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Insland?
Yes.
Mr. Liddy?
Yes.
Mr. Slagel?
Yes.
Resolution 5024.
Thank you. I know it's been a long night. We have no one on tonight. We have no ordinance for first reading, so move on to motions. We have a motion giving permission to the TIP City Area Arts Council allowing for the permanent installation of public art to be installed in Canal Lock Park. Mr. Mack?
Yeah, during the last meeting, study session, we discussed potentially allowing an art installation in Canal Lock Park. We need a motion tonight by council to approve. Before we do that, I guess I see Lynn from the Arts Council here. I know the council had a couple suggestions or questions at the last meeting. I wanted to see if Lynn would come up and.
Would it be okay to go ahead and get a motion to approve, and then we'll have you speak?
I got some answers for your question.
Okay, good. Well, let me ask council, do we have a motion to approve, or do we have a motion to approve the motion?
So move.
Okay, and so we have someone want a second. She's got that. Okay, good. So now council comments are open. So does anyone have questions or comments that they'd like to make? Otherwise, we'll let you go ahead and speak to us.
Lynn Shirk, I'm with the TIP City Arts Council.
Happy birthday.
Thank you so much. You can all pass this resolution for my birthday present. Mrs. Huffman had asked about potential vandalism, people messing with the, with the project. I called Candace Fars, who's on Van Dya, City Council, and she is one of the members that, they have a art park in Van Dya. They've had it for years, and she's been kind of the cheerleader for that whole park area and works on projects and things with the community. I asked her, I said, so have you had any problems, you know, major issues with your art park? And she said, well, there's been isolated, you know, it's years, so there's been isolated incidents where something was vandalized. But she said, honestly, there really hasn't been any major destruction, nothing that, like, one year they do, they do temporary installations, usually in the summer, and they did photography one year, and they didn't have, like, the real photographs. They had prints of the photographs. So somebody came through and vandalized those. They just had them reprinted. They also lease, kind of like what Troy does, they lease sculptures and such for the park for a temporary installation. And she said they had an incident of, I want to say it was some kind of graffiti, but the statues are actually sealed with a sealant that makes it really easy to clean. So basically, it's just powder washing it off and replying the sealant. I don't know if that's something we can do with this or not being, it's metal, but I could definitely check that out and see what the artist thinks. She would know the material better. So I think that was your major question. And the fencing, we kind of talked about, we could put fencing around it, but honestly, if somebody wants to mess with it, they're gonna mess with it.
And I was really asking that as more of a, how can we assist to make it successful and avoid having issues, whether it's to have lighting near there?
And lighting would be easy, because there's power right there, so we could definitely put a spotlight on it.
Or to keep people from.
Right.
Climbing, you know, doing things that.
Right.
They really shouldn't be doing.
Right, and I don't know that they could actually climb this. The way it's designed, I don't think people could climb it. I just don't see that happening. That's my opinion.
Maybe signage?
Yeah. Do not touch. Do not touch the art.
City not responsible.
Yeah, nobody's responsible if you get cut. So I don't know. Does that, did anyone else have any other questions?
No, that was really mine. And then if you have suggestions or, or if more information that you wanted to pass on to Mr. Mack.
I don't think I have anything at this time, but as we get into the project, I'll keep y'all abreast of anything that we, you know, if we come across something that we're concerned with or we think you might be concerned with, we certainly will address that.
Yeah, we appreciate that. Well, thanks for your work on this, too.
Oh, wow. It has to be done. I hate to have grant money that I haven't used, so, and it's, you know, kind of way past due, so.
Yeah, no, we appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Well, are there any other council comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. We'll open the public hearing. If anyone from the public would like to comment on the motion before us, please come forward. Seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Clerk, could you call the role to approve this motion?
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Pittenger?
Yes.
Mr. Slagel?
Yes.
President Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Liddy?
Yes.
Mr. Insland?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. We have nothing noted under miscellaneous. Do you have anything, Mr. Mack?
I do not.
Okay. So we'll open citizen comments on items not on the agenda. If anyone would like to come forward and speak, please do so.
I have, I mean, I forgot, because my board has made.
Comments about this. Okay, so.
Before you speak, give us your name and address.
Lynn Shirk, address is 2066 Ganser Frederick Road, TIP City, Ohio.
Okay, thank you.
Long address. Okay, so the Canal Music Fest, this is our 15th year, and our biggest challenge every year is we always make the money that we need. That's not the biggest challenge. The biggest challenge is getting people out there. So, to help, I would love to see some kind of volunteers from, I don't know, I mean, last year we had a couple of the city guys picking up trash, which was excellent, but like, anyone that would, I don't know whether you guys or another group, or if you know of another group that would be interested in helping us. Honestly, you know, I just turned 68, I'll say it out loud. We're all between, all of our volunteers are, you know, over 60, between 60 and 75, so it's just, it's a hard two days, so tough days, two tough days. But we get, you know, we do have help with you guys from the. we do have help with you guys from the fencing, the parks people help us with that. And then the city guys came out and picked up the trash, which was a huge help last year. We are having, I'm not sure I'm officially supposed to announce this, but it's a band that is a Hart tribute band from Nashville, and they're excellent. The lady that's the lead singer sounds just like the lead singer of Hart. It's amazing. So we'll have Stranger back. This possibly could be our last year, though, because our costs keep going up. Our stage went up from, just our stage, $3,500 to $5,000 this year. It comes down from the Findlay area. And the guy's wonderful, and the stage is wonderful, but it's just so expensive. It's getting more and more expensive every year. I, I don't want to see it end, but honestly, if the city could see just a kick in to cover the stage, that would be wonderful. That would be, you know, $5,000 off our, off of our worries that we need to find $5,000 for. So just something for you guys to think about and talk about and discuss. We would certainly appreciate the support. So it would be even nicer to have a permanent stage, but I know that's a lot more than $5,000. So a great amphitheater would be wonderful. So then we could have more, more than one concert. So just something for you guys to consider and talk about in the future. And if you want me to come in and talk to you at some point, that would be totally fine. Just let me know. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no other citizens here for comments. We'll move on to comments of council members and the city manager. Mr. Slagle?
None, deny.
Mrs. Pittenger?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Insland? Mr. Liddy?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Kessler?
Well, we all had a good Thanksgiving, I hope. I know American Legion fed about 20-some people, and that, that worked out pretty good. And we're closing on Christmas, and I just want to, again, remind everybody, the random acts of kindness, the minor things that make the city nice, to keep on doing. I do see people doing it more and more out there, and it's kind of nice to see it happening. And I'm done.
Thank you. Mayor Rogers?
To what Mr. Kessler said, I would add to look in on your neighbors as it's gotten colder. That's all I have.
Thank you. And I know you had brought up the amphitheater and citizen comments. I just wanted to comment on that, that that's something that had been brought up at one point during strategic planning, maybe CIP. So that would be interesting if you had more information on, if we would consider that moving forward. I'm sure Mr. Mack would be glad to have that discussion with you about what would be needed in order to put that before council for consideration. So, okay. Well, I don't have any other comments. Mr. Mack?
Yeah, just, just one comment. I think here, staff has been working hard to apply, look for grant funding, as we talked about even in the study session here, look for, you know, across the board funding opportunities. Just thought I'd share here, we heard this week, we applied for an ODNR grant for Windmere Park, the walking path to make that a loop path around the park, and we did receive funding for that. So it will cover about 50% of the total cost of that project. So just, just worth noting, as we continue to look for funding, you know, we heard back on this one, and we were happy to hear we did get that, that funded.
Nice. That's great. Okay. Well, with that, I think, was there?
No, that's it.
Do you have something? Okay. So I think we're done for tonight. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Could you call the vote to adjourn?
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. Slagle?
Yes.
Pittenger?
Yes.
Mr. Liddy?
Yes.
Mr. Insland?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
President Huffman?
Yes. Motion carries for adjourn.